I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rivera, could you please take the role?
There we go. Okay, sorry about that. Ms. Alonzo Diaz?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Ms. Caldwell Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Knox?
Here.
Ms. Martorano?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Ms. Sawyer?
Before we begin our first item of business, I would like to do a check-in with everyone. We have not been around each other for, it feels like, a little while. Just want to do a quick 10-minute check-in with you all, see how you are doing, before we get started with our official business. I will now open it up to my board colleagues.
I'll start. I literally just pulled in the parking lot, having driven back from Minneapolis. So I've been on the road, and I'm trying to get myself focused, so I can be present and active tonight.
Hearing no one else, I'll just say, I just came back from vacation, so I'm feeling pretty energized, and everything is good with the world right now. So hopefully that continues for quite some time. But definitely excited to be back here at the board table with my board colleagues as we get to work. Very important work that we have to do. So feeling very good this evening. If there's no one else, then I will continue on with the rest of our meeting. And the first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to poll the personnel recommendations from the consent agenda, but otherwise move with the balance of the agenda as printed.
Okay, Ms. Caldwell Johnson has asked to poll, I believe that's item C14, for the personnel recommendations. We will discuss that separate from everything else. So may I have a motion to approve the agenda minus that C14 personnel recommendation?
Move approval.
Second?
Was that Martorano? Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Caldwell Johnson, and a second by Ms. Martorano. Board members, please cast your votes. And Ms. Norris, you're okay to say yes when we're doing the vote as well, unless you're going to type that in?
I just typed it in, thank you. But also, Norris, yes, thanks.
The vote is approved 6-0. Next on the agenda is public forum. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda. If anyone wishes to speak during this forum, please email rosa.rivera hernandez@dmschools.org. Speakers will be called individually, and we ask, they please state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to the program services and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. Please avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. Thank you for your support of our school district. We appreciate your input. As a reminder to the board and public, this public forum is not a time for board engagement and discussion, as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and our board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Ms. Rivera, do we have any speakers this evening?
We do not.
Okay. Hearing that, we will move to our consent items. Next on the agenda are consent items. We allow any person the opportunity to speak to the board for up to five minutes following the presentation of an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak to an agenda item, please email rosa.rivera hernandez@dmschools.org. Remarks must be germane to the agenda, and we ask that you avoid reference to personalities and character attacks, as those types of comments serve no productive purpose. We appreciate your input. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with a speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table, with speakers' comments informing said discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rivera, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, we do. I'd like to call Brandon Oliver to the podium.
Hi, my name is Brandon Oliver. I live at 1400 Walnut Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50309. My goal tonight is to utilize skills I learned in our District Leadership Institute earlier this summer and District PLC training yesterday, in order to support achieving the board goals, which in turn plays a part in helping our shared community thrive. Two particular concepts I'll be focusing on are accountability and integrity. Unfortunately to some, this could feel like an attack, but I assure you, my intent is sincere and focused on growth rather than removal or destruction. DMPS has been my home for nearly 30 years, when I include my time here as a student. I care about our home and everyone who lives and visits here. I understand we're in a tough spot, as many family members have left, but I'm not giving up hope. During the July 5th work session, the following question was asked regarding a board goal, quote, "What does accountability look like?" end quote. Our interim superintendent answered by mentioning a triad or multi-tiered system in which instructional coaches will focus on accountability at the teacher level, associate principals at the team level, and principals at the school system level. If you turn to page seven of tonight's monitoring report, you will find one of the responses to monitoring is, quote, "Increased allocation of two instructional coaches at middle school for 2022-2023 school year, with emphasis from one coach on capacity building in math curriculum and effective math instruction," end quote. However, these points contradict with actions I've witnessed. I myself applied for an instructional coach position at a school which was set to gain a second coaching position for the first time this upcoming year. I was also given an interview. However, a week after my interview, I received an email stating the district was no longer going to fill the position because it would potentially create a vacancy in a middle school classroom. My concern is that we say that two instructional coaches are needed at each middle school starting in the fall of 2022, which are a key role in achieving the board goals. However, I know there is at least one school which is only being given one instructional coach, which sets up inequities across the district. My understanding is that when there are two coaches, one instructional coach is to focus on reading and the other on math. At no fault of an individual who is potentially overworked, to make one instructional coach focus on both goals could potentially limit teacher access to coaching cycles, and it could also alter the fidelity, which was commented on in the July 5th work session. I suggest we prioritize the type of accountability our interim superintendent mentioned on July 5th, so that we continue on the path of achieving our district board goals. Yes, we need teachers in the classroom, but would you rather prioritize a role which focuses on accountability of teachers or forego the accountability piece to keep a teacher in the classroom, which in turn provides multiple teachers less access to coaching and support? I remember a document used in the elements of effective leadership training from our Leadership Institute this summer, which focused partially on accountability of teachers. The board may remember me emailing that document to you all a few weeks ago. So I will sum up by saying, I feel and think we will be much closer to achieving these board goals if we prioritize access and accountability from instructional coaches, as our interim superintendent suggested, rather than leaving instructional coaching positions vacant or excluding them indefinitely. And I learned yesterday morning in the District PLC meeting that it is important for our beliefs and actions to align. If we believe instructional coaches are important for accountability regarding board goals, then we need to act in that manner. That's integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers we have.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, for your comments this evening. Ms. Knox, I believe you have the consent motion.
Yes, I do. I move that the board approve the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $11,825,121.56 and procurement card transactions in the amount of $1,5,876.66.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Knox and a second by Ms. Caldwell Johnson. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The consent items are approved 6-0. We will now circle back to the consent item which was removed. Ms. Caldwell Johnson, could you please speak to that?
Absolutely. I move that we amend the personnel recommendations list by removing the name DiMario Dara as an individual who is no longer seeking the position.
You have heard the motion made by Ms. Caldwell Johnson. May I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Caldwell Johnson, a second by Ms. Alonzo Diaz. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 6-0.
I have a second motion. I move approval of the amended personnel recommendations as posted in the board agenda.
You have heard the motion by Ms. Caldwell Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Caldwell Johnson, a second by Ms. Martorano. Board members, please cast your votes. Vote is approved 6-0. Next on the agenda, we have an information item only. That's item E1, notice of award of competitive quotes. Please see the information that is there. Next on the agenda, we have items of privilege. Are there any board members that have anything to share this evening?
Madam Chair, I do have one thing. A couple of years ago, we had requested, when establishing the board meeting schedule, that we avoid the first Tuesday of the month of August, because that's National Night Out, where board members and community members celebrate the communities and the neighborhoods. And unfortunately, I'm missing my community celebration, so I'd like for us to consider removing the first Tuesday of the month of August from our board meeting cycle moving forward.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Caldwell Johnson. I just had a conversation with someone today, saying, "We did not remove that date," so we'll make sure that we take care of that moving forward. Is there any other board members that have anything to share this evening? Hearing no one, interim superintendent Smith, I will turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to take a quick moment to thank our bilingual family liaisons and our bilingual family liaison supervisor Laura McAtee for the amazing work that they did to pull together a back-to-school fair where they got registered more than 1,500 students and ready to go for school. So just want to give a shout out to them and thank them for their incredible work. They did an amazing job.
I apologize going out of order, but if I could just add one thing too, I'd like to congratulate our summer graduates. I don't believe we'll be back together to be able to give them their congratulations. I believe there's 120 summer graduates that we will have. We will celebrate them next week, I believe, on August 11th. I know Matt and myself will be there to celebrate those individuals. So just want to say congratulations to our summer graduates as well. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. We greatly appreciate you all. This meeting is adjourned at 5:48, is that right? 5:48 PM, okay. The board will not be taking a break, recess. We're going to go right into our work session. So those who are involved with that work session, if you'd like to come to some of the chairs and the table, and we will get started with our work session for this evening, which will involve our board goals, having a conversation over that, which will be facilitated by, is AJ still with us on the line? Okay, with AJ and Cindy as well?
As well.
And, okay, and then we will also go into our board evaluation after that. So if everyone would like to come forward, we will get going with that conversation this evening. We're going to go ahead and get started with our work session this evening. Again, for this work session, we will be having a conversation over our goals, and we also will go through our board evaluation. We have AJ with us. We have Ms. Norris also with us, joining us through video. We have Cindy with us as well, here at the board table, along with staff who are present with us as well. AJ, I will turn things over to you, as you, and Cindy will be facilitating the conversation for us this evening over our goals.
Excellent. Always a joy to get to spend time with you all, especially when we're talking about what are the things that matter most to you, about what your students should know and be able to do, and what are the values of your community. So we wanted to talk about specifically what's going to happen this evening. And also, I want to say that because you have Cindy at the table, it may be a little bit easier for her to help manage some of this, since there is a slight lag with the video. And so it may be easier for her to help manage the conversation. But certainly, I'll be here with us the entire way through to make sure that if there's any questions I can answer and be responsible to, I will be. So what we'll do is we'll begin with the goals as outlined. We'll go one by one, try to identify technical questions. Again, Cindy's been working really closely with your administration on, you know, trying to get those hammered out and have something really solid to bring back to the full board. After that, then we can have the same conversation, you know, with, you know, guardrails. The intention here is to really get as far as we possibly can on the goals, as well as the interim metrics this evening, using a style of conversation that we've used in the past, which is, you know, keep, delete, modify. Like, well, you know, is this in a position where the board wants to keep this particular goal, deleted, modified, based on the feedback from your interim superintendent? And so that'll be the general format for the conversation. But this is definitely the time. Any questions you have, any clarification you need, tonight is your night to really push for that degree of clarity from your interim superintendent regarding the metrics, and from Cindy and I regarding the mechanisms of how you govern. So that being the quick lead-in, what questions do you have before we get started?
This is Jackie. I think I'd love just an overview. I'm looking at the goals, and the goals were changed to 2026. And I'm trying to understand how to reconcile that with the process that I believe was a thoughtful approach of engaging the community on a regular basis. So I don't know where that fits AJ, because each goal is moved to 2026. But I'd love to hear a little bit about that.
Got it. So the first thing to be clear about is that these are the board's goals, nobody else's. And so ultimately, the people who make the decision about what is in the language of the goals is the board. What's happened here is your superintendent has been informed by the discussion that's taking place at the day, is try to come back to you with what is a reasonable and consensus-worthy version of your goals based on some of the feedback that the board has provided. And then, in addition to that, trying to identify interim metrics that are then aligned to that. And so the work of the board is certainly be informed this evening by the interim metrics. But the real work of the board is to focus in on getting, reaching a place of conclusion as it relates to the goals themselves. So what you just asked, when we get into the conversation, is a perfectly legitimate conversation, question for you to bring up around. First, the first place I'd coach you to go is asking your staff, you know, what were some of your, you know, thoughts surrounding this? You know, why is this, you know, the direction you were advising, you know, the board? You have education experts, might as well put them to work tonight. And so I'd start there, you know, just in a space of curiosity, okay? Here's, based on what you've heard from the board, here's what you're recommending. Can you give us some insights into this? And then after you've heard that insight, and maybe other of your colleagues have questions, then if you are still concerned about it, if it's, you know, if, you know, that's not an indication that staff has done anything wrong. It just means if that's not what you feel best represents the vision of the community, then you have every right to surface that and have that conversation with your colleagues. Like, okay, folks, I've heard the arguments from the administration. You know, those arguments make sense to me. I say we keep this. Or those arguments, I hear those arguments, and they're reasonable arguments, but I still think the better thing for us to do is to go this other direction. That is exactly the type of conversation to have. So when we say keep, delete, or modify, then in that moment, it would be back to you to say, what is the modification in that situation that you are recommending the board consider relative to its goals? So does that kind of process of how this conversation flows, does that help answer your inquiry?
Honestly, not exactly. It's, I apologize, it's really hard not being in the room. I think what I was expecting is that the interim superintendent would, it was suggesting interim measures that might be different than past measures, not that that would be, we would be elongating goals through to 2026. And so I'm not sure if it's seeking clarification from the chair or vice chair about what feels like a decision of not going into the community, which was what we had discussed doing at some point, whether it was this year or next year, to inform the board goals.
And again, that is literally the conversation you'll be having this evening.
Yeah, okay, great.
Even though you are, even though you are getting information about the interims, that was never the discussion for this evening. The discussion for this evening was never discussion around what should the interims be. The discussion this evening is what should the goals be? And the superintendent has come back and said, "Here's what I think are the appropriate interims, and based on these, here's what I think are the appropriate goals." But that's not his call to make ultimately. The final decision for that rests with you all, and that's the conversation you all are here to have, is are we comfortable with these goals? And if so, here are the interims that are aligned with them. And either we're comfortable with that as a board, or we're not. And if you're not, then you're simply not. But I think the administration has, you know, done their job of bringing you what they think is the most advisable package for your consideration. But if that doesn't work for you, that's literally why we're here this evening, is for you as a board to say, yes, based on these interims that the superintendent's brought forward, these goals make sense, or no, no, these goals don't make sense. We need to either keep these or delete these, or we need to modify these. And so that's why I say we'll get to the keep, delete, modify phase of this, because that is the work. Do we want to keep the goals, delete the goals, or modify the goals? Anybody else? Questions about why we're here, what the process for this evening is, before we dive into the work? Other questions like this? I don't know whether Jackie, you have another one, or anyone else around the desk? Other questions about the work we're getting into before we get started?
I don't have a question, but I did want to reference Jackie, that we did receive an email this afternoon that appears to have some updates to the document. So you might want to make sure that you're pulling what was sent via email for tonight's discussion, so that we're all on the same page.
Yep. And just a point of clarification, the updates are simple calculations in the percentages of our Iowa assessment results, because we actually got the official results in, and so it changed it by a tenth of a point. So that's, that's the adjustments are.
And by the way, this is happening all over the country right now. In many states, this is the time of year they're getting data. My board, we get our data, you know, back two weeks from now, and so there'll probably be some minor tweaks when we get our state data. So this is, this is pretty normal, that you're getting data from the state around this time of year. This is happening all over the country. But what it, what it means for the board is that now that you have some data, now you got some decisions to make. So with those preliminaries aside, I think the ideal way to go about this is to let the staff start by just walking through goal number one and the interims for goal number one. And then, once you've walked through what is your proposal, and what's your rationale, how you got here, why this is the course of action that, you know, as the board's, you know, hired education expert, why you believe this is the most prudent course of action to get toward accomplishing the board's goals. Then, after you've had an opportunity to introduce goal one and the interims, then we'll open it up for technical questions. So this is really for clarification, not for discussing the merits. First, we'll do a round of technical questions. And then after that, we can get into the keep, delete, modify. So staff, you know, introduce the item, then the board asks technical questions, then we'll get into substantive discussion of keep, delete, modify. If there's nothing else, just superintendent, ball's yours.
Thank you, sir. So the, we'll begin with just goal one. The recommendation is that the goal state that the percent of all fourth grade students proficient on the Iowa Assessment, ELA Assessment, will increase from 52.6% in the spring of 2022 to 67% in the spring of 2026. We've provided some annual targets that we would shoot for to get us to that point by 2026. The first interim goal that we felt most represented our opportunities to show projected progress towards making this goal would be around the percent of second and third grade students meeting benchmark on FastBridge CBM reading, in that that would increase from 54.3% in the spring to 70% in the spring of 2022, or '26, excuse me. I'm gonna go ahead and use the, AJ, correct me if I'm wrong, do I need to do one interim at a time? Or can I get through both interims and discuss the rationale for the two? Or Cindy?
Yeah, and give the correlation rationale.
Sure. So the FastBridge meeting benchmark interim goal, in our internal assessments of that, it actively predicted the Iowa Assessment ELA proficiency for 77% of the students. 81% of our students who met benchmark on CBM reading in spring of third grade were proficient on the Iowa Assessment in the ELA during the spring of their fourth grade year. Conversely, 74% of students who did not meet benchmark on CBM reading in the spring of third grade were not proficient on Iowa Assessment in the ELA during the spring of fourth grade. So what I'm attempting to articulate there is that there is a strong correlation between how students perform on the CBM reading as it relates to the Iowa Assessment goal, recommended goal. So that's the first thing. The other reason why I think it's important that we look at Iowa Assessment as a goal measure is because it aligns with state assessments. measure is because it aligns with state assessments. So, meaning that, a couple things. We are required by state code to provide the Iowa Assessments to our students. And so the, the window of time, is it two weeks, Mary? Window of time, about two weeks? Ten days?
We have actually, now it's like mid-March through mid-May to give it, but we try to limit that time so it's less disruptive to instruction. So we say two weeks as an organization.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And so for that factor alone, the fact that we have to give it, we know that we need to spend time, some concentrated and specific deliberate time on making sure that our students are in the best testing environment possible. To date, that honestly has not been the case. Our goal measure has not been around the Iowa Assessments. And so while we've taken the test seriously, it hasn't been the metric, the external evaluation assessment of our students proficiency rates. And so we feel like there's an opportunity here to look at the Iowa Assessments as the measure, a measure by the state which we're required to give anyway. The other significant factor in that is that our state utilizes those scores, our student assessment scores, as part of the overall student school or the overall school index, our, our rating system. And so our schools are rated in various categories, partly, not completely, but partly on how our students perform on that assessment. And that rating is then publicized, and then multiple agencies use that rating as the narrative by which they talk about our students and our, and our teachers and our community. And so there's a correlation there between the narrative that might be out there and as folks associate what is or is not happening in our classrooms based on the rating that the state uses that's connected directly to this Iowa Assessment. And so as we're, as the team and I pull together, what are the interim goals that give us the best opportunity to know where our students are that would correlate to students performing at a high level on that state assessment? These are the interim goals that we pulled together. What did I miss? Just a question, the, the 2026, I'm actually operating under the impression that that was where the board like, would like us to go in terms of extending our goals to 2026. We can absolutely move that back to 2025, 2024, whatever the board would like us to do. But I'm under the impression that that actually came from the board as a 2026 sunset.
Okay, yes, Matt, I believe that was in May that we, that that came up with that 2027, six, 2026. And then also we know too, that when we're making our goals, it's about three to four years that we need to have in there when we're going to be monitoring that. So anything too soon, that's me. Me, me and Suri don't get along, so sorry about that. But yeah, we know that's about three to four years in there, so I think that's where that 2026 came. And if I do remember correctly, that came in the month of May.
And just a point of clarification, we are not going to eliminate our community engagement and community listening sessions. We will still go out to the community, and if we were to hear something drastically new or different regarding where the community as a whole was at regarding where, where they would like us as a board to focus, then we would come back to that drawing table.
I, I agree. And the other aspect of, of the recommended interim goals and the goal are that the team and I feel strongly that we're still representing the values of the community lifted up those, those four to five years ago regarding literacy and math. It was talked about specifically around algebra. And when we get to that goal, we can talk about that too, because it's recommended as an interim goal to continue to monitor and report out on. Right now, we're also suggesting that we, we just change the metric by which we're measuring proficiency in literacy and utilizing some current goal language into our interim goals.
I just want to jump in as a new board member and echo Jackie's confusion. So I just think as a board, any additional coaching we could be getting, I thought we've been talking, I mean, I feel like we've gone round and around and around about board goals and talked a lot about going back to the community in this coming year, that was part of our plan. So this is the first time that I feel like we're gonna, I mean, I remember in my last monitoring session saying, okay, so we're gonna, this, we're gonna achieve this goal in one year. I mean, feeling like we were kind of at the end of the rope with the goals. So I, if this was communicated, I was not prepared to think about that. I thought we were just changing, I don't know what. So I just wanted to echo Jackie's sentiments of feeling a little confused sitting here again. So not a reflection on you, Matt, at all, and I appreciate all the work that everyone's put into it, but as a board member, I was not fully versed on what this conversation was going to look like today. So just, so she's not alone in that.
I'd, go ahead.
If I can say something else, I appreciate you saying that, that, or señor Matthew, that you feel you're still representing the vision and values of the community. And I also appreciate hearing that we will be going back into, we will be going into the community. Because I believe that, you know, it's, is the vision and the values of the community that we have to be able to reflect. And so I go back to my first comment. What made you feel, what makes you feel that you are indeed representing the vision and the values of the community?
We feel because we're still focused on literacy. And what we're measuring in the literacy value are students meeting benchmark and students showing aggressive growth on these interim goal recommendations. So we're, we're still measuring and prioritizing literacy in this value. Yes, ma'am?
And I think too, in our conversations is that, you know, one of the things I think that is the responsibility of the board, the board is after having conversations is wondering if these are the right goals. And not that, we know that focusing on the literacy and the math is something that we know that we're doing, but in saying is it the right goals? Our goals were focused on the FAST data. And what I'm hearing from Matt and team is that it's the FAST data that has a correlation to how students will do on the Iowa Assessment. So I think what we were doing was, in turn, we're saying that our students will reach a certain measure by the FAST assessment by a certain time, but FAST wasn't really giving the true inclination of, I think of what our students are doing. And if I'm interpreting that wrong, anyone at the table, please correct me. So I think that as a board, we owe it to ourselves to look over these goals, to make sure that they're the right thing, because we want to make sure that, that we are giving our staff kind of the go-ahead for them to be able to, to interpret what we're looking for. And so I trust that when we started this process of looking through that data, what we know hasn't changed is that our black males are still the lowest performing group of, of students within our district. That hasn't changed. We know that literacy and math has not changed. So no matter what the goals are, that is something that I wholeheartedly believe that we still need to be focused on is literacy and math. And so now, as we've had these conversations and we've flushed through it, I think what I've learned is that while maybe what we were going for was great, it really wasn't getting us with what we needed to know. And so I think now with this goal of saying that we're going to be focusing on the Iowa Assessments as our measure, but we know that FAST will still be a part of it, because now the district has said, this is what we think will show us exactly what our students will be able, know and be able to do through this. So I, I feel like that this goal works. I feel like it still doesn't take away from the visions and values of our community. When we do go back out there and talk to our community again, goals absolutely might change, but I think right now, I don't believe that we're missing the mark on this at this time.
If, if I may, I neglected to mention this as well, too. In terms of the, the state ratings that are strictly associated with the Iowa Assessments, there's also the opportunity to not only change that narrative through our students' brilliance on that assessment, but it also impacts potentially enrollment. And I know on a number of occasions here at this table and in this room, thankfully, the board continues to press upon the need for me and the team to continue to be strategic in our efforts so that we are bringing folks together around a, a single mission, a single vision in support of our students and our families and our staff. And that's the other reason why, as in terms of a rationale, of why this goal is being recommended. It holds the values of literacy that our community has lifted up. And it also allows us to continue to rewrite the narrative that Des Moines Public Schools is the place for all students, and it will be the place where you get the best education possible. And we need to actually turn the tide in those declining enrollments over the last several years.
Can I ask another question? I know our monitoring reports before were third grade. Is there a reason we've gone from third grade to fourth? Did I miss that?
No, thank you for looking that up. Yeah, so the interim goal metrics are based on second and third grade so that we can get through an entire third grade year with that curriculum, as well as that instruction, and so that we can measure the student's knowledge of third grade literacy in their fourth grade year. It also aligns with state and federal assessments at the fourth grade level for many of the same reasons. So we're looking to measure the entire year's worth of students being engaged in third grade literacy just on their fourth grade year. The way we're measuring it now, we're still missing a good month and a half of instruction because it's not reflected in their third grade year. Is month and a half accurate? That, that was my quick math.
Yeah, and that state assessment metric holds fourth grade, not third grade. And there might be one more.
Well, I think they do take in third grade. It's the very first time they take that state assessment. So this, you know, national, when you pull national data, they usually will pull fourth grade, right? Because of that, because you're, you're working on those early literacy skills up through third grade. And in the correlation to that is if you're fluent, then that's going to help with your comprehension. And, and that's going to be tested on a state assessment where they're reading passages and answering questions and also writing. So we felt like, let's keep working on those fluency goals, those, those predictive measures up through third, and let them take the test in third for the first time and use the fourth grade test to really show, are we hitting those literacy goals as, as they're measured, not just in Des Moines, but across the, you know, the nation? They use fourth grade data to really tell whether a school is hitting or a district is hitting those literacy goals. So that's why we choose fourth grade. But we still have to make our third grade, our third grade goal is just as important now as it was this past year. If we don't hit those third grade goals, we're not going to hit the fourth grade.
I had a, just a question for our coaches. So with the proposal that's in front of us, it appears that there are two things that we're being asked to consider. One is the assessment that will be used to determine proficiency, even though FAST and FastBridge will inform that. And then the second that you're asking us to approve is the change in date. Is that correct?
Yeah, so that, that is what you would be.
You would just be approving the, the goals. So once all of the technical questions have been answered, that you have about, once Matt has given the explanation about how these interim measures correlate to the goal and the rationale behind changing that goal measure, then we would facilitate you through a discussion, are you going to keep this goal, delete it, or modify it? And that's the opportunity for the board to say, no, we don't want it spring 2026. No, we don't want it to be ISAS. We want to go back to FastBridge, which I, I think it's been explained, but part of the rationale in changing this is that you were using, you were using a metric to measure a metric. You, yeah, there was, you were, the goal measure, you were leaning on one measure for almost everything. And so this through the work that the administration did, and if you've, there's a document about goals and guardrails, quality and measures, their, their study of that led them in part to this as well because of the, the quality, previous quality of metrics which you were using.
So I, I just have another question. And this is not to suggest that what's being proposed isn't right. I want to make sure, though, in the community, we're able to articulate how our measure aligns with what United Way and others are reflecting as third grade reading proficiency. So how do we create the narrative that helps people to understand what United Way, who's the biggest funder of literacy in our community, is advocating aligns to the percent of fourth grade students proficient on the state assessment? I'm going to give you my take on it and tell me if I'm wrong. So when we, in the spring, complete the assessment, we're completing an assessment that is a full, almost a full school year after what would be considered an individual being proficient in third grade. So we can definitely say that if our fourth grade assessment says X, that means they were proficient in third grade, correct?
They're reading ready. That's what we think about. And so we're pushing, all of these community agencies push to be reading ready by third grade, so that you can pass these cumulative type assessments.
Right.
And summative type assessments in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh. But if we don't, yeah.
I think it's important that we talk the talk in a way that makes the correlation between what the community experts who are out there touting third grade reading as being sort of the measure with what we're doing in terms of how we actually are showing
Right.
what's happening in third grade. So we're going to have to figure out how we normalize that discussion in a way that has that direct correlation between what was and what is.
Yeah, I think like talking about reading ready, that's why we have that third grade measure, that you want to be reading ready. Ready for what? Well, we're ready to take this assessment in fourth grade and pass it, you know? So I, I totally agree with you, and we can change that language and change the, or just change the way we talk about that. Instead of saying that once we get them reading ready, we're done, that's not enough. Right? Reading ready is the starting point. We have to get them to where they can pass these standardized assessments because that is a gatekeeper for them in lots of areas, not just fourth grade, but as they move up. So I think it's really talking about reading ready is really important, it's just not the end.
Can I ask something else? Would you, would you speak to where comprehension fits in?
The ISAS. That's the comprehension test. So the measures we've been using in FastBridge don't measure comprehension, they measure fluency. So you, you have to be a fluent reader. The correlation between being fluent and comp, and to be able to comprehend what you read is, is, there's a close correlation there. So that's what we talk about being reading ready, right? You want to be able to read fluently, then you use that fluency throughout. I mean, you're starting with the comprehension work in kindergarten, but that's why the ISAS is a better assessment for us, because it not just, doesn't just measure a skill, it measures their comprehension, their ability to, to read different passages, to critical think, critically think about things, but also writing. Our ISAS test has a writing component that the students have to pass, and that is really important as well. So that's, that's another reason why the ISAS is a, is a good measure of where we are as far as grade level reading, whereas FastBridge is more of a, a benchmark and in a, and a pass a wider net. Still very important, but it doesn't get at some of those skills you're talking about, the comprehension and, and literacy.
So if you want a reference point, page five, your definitions.
Right.
Just, that's what I'm looking at. Kind of lays out what each of those ELA assessment under, kind of sub under ISAS, and then the FastBridge CBMR, what each of those assessments measures, just for future reference.
So when you, can I say something else? Can I say something else? So when you talk about comprehension and looking at proficiency, one would have to assume that adequate competency over the knowledge equals comprehension? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jackie, did you have anything? Looks like she's frozen. Oh, there she is.
I'm here.
You want to speak to interim goal two?
So goal two.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Could we, were we through with the both interim goals, or both interim measures?
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that we had done both AMB. So there's no more questions on, no more technical questions on that, on goal one? Then I think the, AJ, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the conversation now is keep, delete, modify?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so knowing what you know, and having had the explanation around the interim goals and the changes that have been proposed, board, would you like to keep this goal, delete it, or modify it?
And just for clarification, this is, if we were to say keep, this is not a vote, this would be added to an agenda item forthcoming and be voted on by the board as a whole?
Okay.
That is accurate, and, and likely you would have some time for, have them posted for, ahead for some.
So is it, would it be appropriate, if we were to say, land, land on keeping or modified versions of these, could we then do our community? I looked at our timeline, we are supposed to do our community engagement by the end of August, based on our timeline. Is it realistic to think that we could complete that community engagement prior to the vote of these occurring? I just want to understand the process. If we were then, if we were to go out to the community at a later date after we were to approve new goals, we would then potentially come back if we were hearing different things from, from them?
The board would have the opportunity to, until you actually adopt them, there would be opportunity for change, for their modification.
Okay, so we could, we could conduct some sort of community feedback between now and the time that we vote on these, even if it's not two-way community feedback, we could conduct some surveys and, and whatnot prior to voting?
Yes. And I think that would be helpful, except that with the amount of time that that would be, that would give us, I don't know that it would be such an inclusive, you know, process for people. I mean, if, if the point is to have people have input and truly make that opportunity, I don't, I mean, I don't know that the time is enough for people to weigh in.
When are we hoping to vote on these? I don't know that we have a date decided.
I don't have a date decided on that. I'm basing things off of our conversation really this evening to decide if we're going to keep, modify, how that goes, but I don't have a date for that right at this time. Basing that off of this conversation this evening.
I am so sorry, I thought that we had said later in August or nineteen, but I misunderstood that.
She's referred when we would actually vote on these, not the time of the, in the timeline, also with that timeline, there's flexibility in that. That is the goal, to be able to have our conversations by the end of August, which is flexibility in that. But I think Ms. Montarano was referencing when we would officially vote on that, was, was I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, the end of August was the date in which our, our community engagement is slated to happen, not, we haven't slated a date for the vote to happen.
Ms. Montarano, I misunderstood.
This is Jackie, in the spirit of keep, modify, and delete, I would like to modify this goal to reflect its initial date, which was either 2023 or 2024, based on the COVID. But I'm not comfortable with it going until 2026, until we better understand what our community engagement strategy is for all of our goals.
And those of you that were here in 2019, when these were developed and when you went out and did community engagement, can you speak to a little bit of the process around? I, I don't think that we go to the community with dates and very specific information. So Jackie, to speak to that, that request, I don't know that we would necessarily be going out to the, the community and saying, do you agree with this end date? I think that is a collaborative decision by the board and the leadership, or board and superintendent team. That is one of the pieces, really the pieces, it's my understanding that we get from the community, our math is our concern, English is our concern, college and career readiness is our concern.
And I, I agree with you, Kim. I guess I'm trying to understand, when do we actually get to have that conversation? Because the feedback that we get often is that, where is college and career readiness? Where is excellence reflected for all students? So I'm trying to understand, when are we having that conversation? And my understanding was that we were heading towards that type of conversation when we went into the community. So I'm looking for an answer to that question. When are we going to be hearing from our community about their general sense of DMPS goals?
So I would just offer, and Jackie, I'm not going to answer your question, I'm going to respond to the initial question that Cindy asked us with regard to keep, modify, or delete? Or delete. And I believe that this is consistent with what the community shared with us around reading, and also I would agree that math proficiency was also an area. So absent having a reason to deviate from what the community indicated when we had those conversations, I'm comfortable with keeping. I think the other thing that's important here as well, and Kim mentioned this, but the, the community shared with us their goal at the macro level. And it was the responsibility of the board and superintendent team then to be much more intentional around what the execution of the goal looked like relative to not only establishing the target measures, but also then identifying the assessment tool that would be utilized to help us determine whether or not we were meeting goal. So I'm perfectly comfortable with this, the way it's presented. What I would say, though, is that before we leave this conversation, it's going to be imperative for us to have clarity amongst the board, what our date is for moving forward with the community conversations, because it feels like we're trying to put two conversations into one tonight, and tonight we're being asked to review and discuss the interim goals. What we do after this, to me, is another discussion. So I want to stay focused on the thing that's in front of us tonight.
I appreciate that clarity. I would just say, Terry, I think that was very helpful. It would, I think, just to follow up, when will we be, it will be helpful to understand, when will we be having that second conversation?
So I would like us to get through this piece of making the decision of keep, modify, delete. I think once we get through this entire conversation, then we could pinpoint when we would have a follow-up discussion for this. I have asked you all to keep your Tuesdays for this entire month open, so I think we can have that conversation after we get through the entire conversation of these goals, if we're going to keep, delete, or modify, and then we can talk about next steps after that.
Can, can I get a little more clarification before, just to move forward? Because Terry, I hear what you're saying, which is basically like, all that's really changing here is the assessment that we use to reach the goal. Is that fair? Would you say like, these are more ambitious, these are, are you, or otherwise, are we, are you feeling like we're pretty on track with where, do you understand what I'm trying to say? What is different, other than what you're presenting is a different assessment and the end date?
And we're adding the comprehension component? Because it's, it's measured in, in the Iowa assessments.
Right, I understand. But, but essentially, you're saying it's the same goal, but we're gonna.
It is literacy focused.
We're gonna measure it in a different way because it's, because it would align, like, if what they're getting on their interim should indicate these similar outcomes related to ISAS?
Correct, yes. So there, these interim metrics and these interim goals would be, would have strong predictive value that they are going to perform at a very high level. Our students will perform at a very high level on the Iowa assessments, which does measure comprehension.
So we're like on the same trajectory? I'm just trying to understand what's different, other than the fact that we're now pushing the goal out further, and we're measuring the same things in a different way a year later?
You're correct.
Okay.
We're on the same trajectory.
And we feel like this is going to help us achieve the vision of the community? How? Like, how is measuring? And I agree with everything you're saying, don't get me wrong. I'm 100% for this philosophy. I'm just trying to understand, if the vision of the community is that our kids can read, and all we're really changing is the way we're going to measure and give us a couple more years? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what, what is different.
Sure, well, again, the couple more years, if I'm wrong, I, I believe that that came from the board. And so that's where the couple of years is coming from. So happy to change that, if, if that's what the board would like to do. What we talked about and what our team focused on was is, how do we continue to represent the board's value and their emphasis around literacy? And quantify that as a metric that includes comprehension, and to Kelly's point, also has a writing component to it as well, right? Which is part of fluency and comprehension as well? And what are the metrics that we could monitor that would give us predictive value towards meeting that, that value of literacy? Just measuring, but to your point, just, just with a different metric of Iowa assessments. The additional value, again, of the Iowa assessments is that it actually is strategic in the idea that it helps us to improve our ratings, if you will, that the state would allocate to us and designate us with, and allows us to also to continue to change the narrative in the communities, the negative narrative that might exist, which would impact our enrollment.
And these recommendations also reflect the coaching that you and your team have undergone with the council under AJ and Cindy's guidance. What we were doing in the past was not best practice, it did not fall within, if we were to look at our self-evaluation, as we will later tonight, we were not being predictive, we were not being cognizant, we could not meet that 35 in our goals and, our vision and goals area, because we were not following best practices of the framework itself. So many of these recommendations can't, have come based on your coaching, correct?
Yes. And, and just to remind everyone that this was a conversation that the board, again, I, I believe it was back in May, had regarding, regarding keeping these goal, the literacy and blackmail math goals, moving them out, and having this all decided so that it would be the search criteria, because this would serve, the goals that you all want accomplished are going to serve as your number one search criteria for an incoming superintendent. So the timeline that you've had, while it's a little bit off track, given the amount of time that it's taken to actually complete this work, because it's been done very thoroughly, was written in such a way to reflect the conversations that you've had around looking at the goals and interim goals, that these were the goals that the board was looking to keep and to push out, and that community engagement around superintendent search was going to be a priority over community engagement around vision and values, with the idea that vision, vision and values, you've already, you've already spoken with your values via the guardrails, and are now, have now added a fifth, which will come later. But this was to, to update the vision through the goals and interim goals. You had charged Matt with seeing if the interim goals were indeed the interim goals that they needed to be, and through that process, this is what all of that work led to. Because again, it was a very thorough process of study around quality measures and around what, what would really tell what our kids are, know and are able to do that would really, really get the board understanding if, if reality matched vision. So that, that's.
I was, yeah, I was part of that conversation, but I, I just will say that the, the cognitive dissonance for me is that this is now a discussion about 2026, as opposed to when we had the conversation, was keep, modify, or delete within the typical board goal cycle. So that's, that's the thing that is just a struggle for me. I'll just point that out.
Yeah, I, I actually, I think that, I was actually going to hop on and say the exact same thing, Jackie, because I've been listening to the conversation. There are two things that have been made clear in the last three comments that I think are just worth highlighting for clarity's sake. One is, yes, this is a conversation the board said that you wanted to have, and we're now having it, with two things that are throwing folks off, I think. One was the reality that the previous set of interim goals was not actually predictive. I think the board acknowledged this, called on your interim superintendent to say, could you please solve this for us? Because we don't have a meaningful way of knowing, are we making progress that actually is giving us reliable data? And so you're in this situation because you didn't have an aligned set, and now you do. The other, I think, hard reality that is confronting, it sounds like Jackie, is, you know, as the administration has put this together and said, okay, here's what this looks like spread out over time. I think Jackie's fear, which I think the boards does need to take more aggressive steps to assuage, is that this conversation will become a proxy for having a more fulsome community conversation around what is the future of our work. So this, you know, was always intended to be solving the current problem, it was never intended to be a replacement for future deliberation. I hear Jackie's worry, it took me a while to figure out, okay, Jackie, what, what is it that is really frustrating you about this? And after a while, I finally got there, then I appreciate that you named it yourself. I think Jackie's real fear, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this will become a replacement for actually having that more full conversation.
That's correct, thank you.
The way we solve for that isn't to change what we're doing tonight, I think tonight we fix what we're doing, but the way to solve for that is to actually honor the question you made, which is, we need to make sure that we've calendarized that process for going out to the community. I would suggest to you that the most ideal. I would suggest to you that the most ideal scenario is that either you calendarize that in such a way that that can be completed in advance of conducting a superintendent search, or that you wait until after the conclusion of your superintendent search and do that. Either do it in such a timeline that you can use the results of that community engagement to identify who would be best suited to serve as your permanent superintendent. Or if you're not gonna do it on that timeline, wait until you've selected a permanent superintendent under the current set of goals and guardrails. And then with the permanent superintendent seated, then have that conversation. So I think those are your two most, you know, realistic options. And they describe fairly divergent timelines. But I think that is a secondary conversation that would be reasonable for the board to have at the conclusion of the current conversation. So do your keep, delete, modify on your current, you know, set of interims and goals. But then at the end of that, okay, do we want to have this conversation about modifying these in advance of a permanent search or after a permanent is selected? And so let me check in. Jackie, is that at all clarifying for what your...
That was exactly, that was exactly it. Thank you for being a lot more eloquent than I was.
No, I apologize that it took me long enough for those dots to connect.
A.J., I would just like to lift up that, you know, the superintendent and his team has done exactly what we've asked him to. On June 18th, you shared with us a timeline. That timeline includes in the May 2022 section that the interim superintendent and team will begin training work on extension of goals to 2026. So I, I think we, as a board, need to honor what we've already agreed to. And what we have given our superintendent and his team the charge to do. Perhaps we don't recall those conversations from May, but we did have them and we did agree to them. And we've approved this timeline, which includes those dates, including the superintendent search, including community engagement. So I just want to honor what we've all already agreed to.
Can I just state just one other quick thing to sort of bring us back to where we were relative to, what is it? Keep, change, modify, whatever it is, those things? So I really just want to thank Matt and his team for leaning into this process in ways that we have not done before. And I think we find ourselves where we are tonight because while I think we had really good intentions of having fidelity to the process, we somehow missed it. And now we're at a point where everyone is leaning in and giving us their best thinking about where we need to be and how we utilize the goal framework as a way to really accelerate what we want to see happen for students. So I just want to say thank you for that and to the team. Because I feel like for the first time, this has been taken seriously. And I feel like the information that we're getting is the information that, all things being equal, maybe we should have gotten before, but we didn't. But I feel like we are doing what we are being charged to do. And I just want to say thank you for the time and attention that you've given to this process. Because I feel like for the first time, there is not only a great case made for the why, but also a framework that I can live with.
To answer your questions, Cindy, I would, for me, I haven't voiced it yet, but I would keep goal one as it is.
And so if I'm understanding that response, were you responding to this, to this first goal? Is that you would keep what is recommended?
Yes, to the first goal.
And I would just, to connect the dots to the conversation I was having a moment ago with Jackie, is that keeping these recommendations right now is essentially a de facto assertion that we should use what we currently have for a superintendent search? Which means any major community engagement would be contemplated later. But this is the dataset that would be used to inspire that search. The other option, obviously, is you'd say, no, we don't want to do that. We want to do a different public process before the search. But then that means the timeline of the search, the document that you all adopted, would need to be completely rewritten to significantly push back the timeline of the search to accommodate for that. And so just trying to clarify, when you all, if you make the statement, hey, we want to keep this and move forward, then you maintain the timeline that you all have already received. And it means that these metrics are being used to help propel that search. If you want to delete these or modify them, and you want to change them significantly, you can, like I said, you can do that. That is the board's choice, it's not the administration's choice. But then you have to make this larger decision, okay, if we're gonna do that, then what impact is that gonna have on other critical work, namely superintendent search? And so I hear a call for keeping this to also be synonymous with, let's stay on the timeline that we already have, which calls for superintendent search now and a more fulsome community engagement on these topics later. And so I just want to put that out there so folks have some sense of understanding. This is, this is the timeline that you all are on. If you want to significantly diverge from that, what you decide here does have impacts on that. Is there the discussion on goal one, or is there a readiness to proceed?
I'm, I'm ready to proceed. And I also wonder about how we can condense our discussion on the remaining goals, since really the primary changes are the same in terms of the change in the assessment tool, as well as the change in the dates.
That's correct. We can condense a lot of it because it'll be very similar. There are some nuances based on the next literacy goal, which is specifically focused on blackmail literacy. And so there is some additional, there's an additional, there are some changes. If we're ready to go into that conversation, we can certainly do that, and we can speak to that specifically.
Testing. I think we just need to hear from all board members, myself, Maria, and Jenna. I would like to keep.
I think that there's some concern about extending it through 2026. And I just want to understand this. I will say keep. I also want to express that, you know, because we agreed on something. And if the purpose is to process, decide what direction we want to go, we certainly are, we have the right to change our minds. And I think that that is the purpose of tonight. I think that it's, it's great to be able to converse. But also keeping in mind that you can change your mind tomorrow. Thank you.
I'll go, yeah, I will keep them also. I hope we all, I appreciate you lifting up the timeline. I love a good timeline. I love accountability. I think if we say we're gonna do something, we need to do it. So I hope that we, I'm all for, if we want to approve this or whatever, whatever we put in the timeline, let's hold ourselves accountable to it, as well as our staff. So that's my, my two cents. I will say keep, but I will be studying the timeline and making sure we are, we are all on it.
And I, having issues tonight. You know, the timeline, of course, it gives us a guide. But I don't want to discount the fidelity at which we do the work, which Teri lifted up. I'm not saying that we have to be incredibly diligent at the expense of quality conversation and quality work. I just, yeah, thank you for the collaboration.
I think it's critically important for our staff to not feel like we're constantly moving the goalposts. So our ability to have fidelity to what we say we're going to do, unless there is an absolutely, you know, earth-shattering situation that requires us to do something different, I don't think we should be willy-nilly about this because it's too important. So I'm not suggesting that what, that's what you're saying, Maria. But I do think that we have to be thoughtful about how we create a framework that not only is fair, recognizing that these are the goals by which our superintendent will be evaluated, but also how we reflect back to the community whether or not we're doing what we say we're going to do. So I think that there is that sweet spot where we have to recognize if there's something considerable that has changed in the internal or external environment that would require us to rethink those dates, that's one thing. But if we just wake up tomorrow and say, you know, that's not what I want to do, that, I won't go with that.
So can I just ask a clarifying question, just out of curiosity of board night, new to the board? Do you think we're gonna have this conversation again then in a year possibly? Since something could change in our external environment with a superintendent?
I don't know if that will be the case because, going back to my training here, the goals are ours. The interim goals are the superintendent's. Now, what could change is that a new superintendent can come in and maybe interpret this differently and might have a new set of interims that they may want us to consider, yes. So there's, so the interims might look different in my mind, but that's the superintendent's, the goals are ours. So in my mind, the possibility of that could be, the interims could change. It may cause us to need to change maybe some language within our goals. But to me, that's the only thing I see, is that a new superintendent...
So I think here's where the confusion is. I'm glad you just said that. Because to me, when you said the goals aren't gonna change, like, I didn't think anything at the top was gonna change the goal, right? So you're saying the spirit of the goal, like, third graders will read, that's our goal, not, not that by 2026. Is that what you're saying?
The entirety of the goal is ours. The goal one is ours, as a board. The interim goal is the superintendent's. Either player in this makes changes, but that's, the ownership is there. So the ownership of the goal is ours. The ownership of the interim goals is the superintendent's. We could get a new superintendent who might look at our goal and say, yeah, those interims, maybe, maybe not. Because that's the ownership of the superintendent. Am I saying that correctly, Cindy? I just want to make sure I'm...
Yes, the interim goals are, are the superintendent's.
So Jenna, just a case in point. So when we originally established these, we had different annual target dates. And the target date, if I'm not mistaken, for the end of the target was 2022, correct? And then we had COVID. And the last opportunity we had to revisit this was as a result, result of us knowing that COVID was going to have drastic implications for our ability to meet the targets. It didn't mean that we didn't have a good reason for it, but it also gave us a reason to sort of rethink, all things being equal, how do we normalize based on an incident that we had not anticipated or planned for? And how do we incorporate that into our annual targets? And that, that was the only time that we've ever had a change. We haven't been in this for a very long period of time, but that would be the kind of information that might inform a change in target. Does that help?
I would say we're, I'm, continue to struggle, and I'll just continue to voice it, is that, you know, we've had three new board members join the board. We, to, to not go into the community in any significant way and make the assumption that it is just literacy and math for a target group is, is what we should be doing for the next three years, is, is not something that I'm comfortable with. I have to be honest, I will continue to say this. I, I, I think that in, of course, literacy and math are very important, but to a lot of other people, so is career technical education, so is achieving an associate's degree by high school graduation, so are other aspirational elements that we might hear from our community. And so I guess I just am struggling with the idea that we are going to elongate these goals for an additional three years without any thoughtful community conversation.
If we go back to the community and hear that college career readiness is a priority, then we would write a new goal, right?
Right. So when are we gonna do that? I guess I just would love a straight answer on when we're gonna do that. Can we do that after the superintendent search? Because I just heard maybe we're not gonna do that. So if we could settle and hone in on something a little bit more specific, it probably would allow us to move forward a bit quicker.
I don't think you're hearing that we're not gonna do that, but I think that's a decision that we have to make. We know that the reality of the board is we're not gonna be able to do both. So we're gonna have, and we know right now that our superintendent search is the priority. So if that's the priority that the board is putting into at this moment in time, we know that then, after we get done with our superintendent search, which we know could take until next year, then we're not talking about having a conversation with our community until sometime in 2023. So that's, that's where I, that's where I see it. So I can't specifically say it's gonna be March of 2023, and by that time, I won't be chair. But I just know that if the superintendent search is our priority, those are the community conversations that we're going to be having first. Then after that, we will have to set a time and date, or whatever our, our timeline will end up looking like of when we would go out to the community, which would be 2023, which wouldn't put us off track thinking about when we originally adopted these goals in the first place. We normally go out to the community in that three, four-year time period. So we're not off track in having that conversation. And then I would see in that conversation, if there's something to, that arises, as Ms. Marts-Ronno said, then maybe at that point in time, we might be revisiting goals per se. But that's what I would say, is that it would be superintendent search first. Then in 2023, we would be talking about having some community conversations with the community.
I think that's all I needed to hear. I think that's, that is why I've not understood why we're looking at 2026. So, thank you.
So what we're definitely supposed to be getting to tonight, which, again, as has been pointed out, is on the timeline, is the board made the decision that you wanted to spend time now reaffirming existing goals and guardrails in advance of superintendent search, not go out and conduct an entirely new one. Now, it does sound like there, there is some desire to go out to the community, to reintroduce these ones and to get some amount of feedback. But it's, but what's in the timeline, you know, feels more like, feels less like a full process, because that's not what you all wanted. Because you wanted to have this done without pushing back a superintendent search process. So this is more of an abbreviated, just reintroduction. Again, as I said earlier, you're the board, you can choose whatever you want. If you wanted to push the search back and do that in advance, you could. If you wanted to wait till after the search, you could do that. That being said, I'm not actually hearing any good answers to Jackie's question this evening. And, and so this, this is probably something that you're gonna want to spend a little bit more time thinking about so it's not an off-the-cuff conversation. The two arguments that I'm hearing, one is, let's do something in 2023. After, you know, superintendent, you know, is identified and, you know, that is one approach. Another approach, I think the one that Jackie has very clearly voiced that she is not in favor of, is doing so in 2025. Which is when you would normally do so if you were trying to schedule such a thing after current one to expire.
A.J., I think Dewana just said that we would be proceeding with this, and I think Jackie appreciated hearing that, after we complete the superintendent search in 2023. It's not waiting until 2025. It's not waiting until 2025. It's taking this conversation up after we complete our number one priority at this point, which is superintendent search, which means that we would be doing it in 2023. That's what I heard.
Oh, and that's what I heard as well. I just wasn't certain if that was, that was kind of the well-considered, you know, final perspective, or if that was, you know, identified as an option. But to me, I, I didn't feel like, I, that didn't sound firm to me. And so I would generally encourage on something this important, have that conversation. Um, but if the board has already said on it, then so be it. Then we can go ahead and start modifying your implementation timeline now. But I would generally encourage, let's have a separate conversation that is just about that. Um, since it sounds like the board's decision this evening is to affirm the current timeline, then let's have, I would encourage a separate conversation about what changes doesn't want to make, um, for future portions of the timeline, namely the second half of 2023, which hasn't really been, um, calendarized yet in your implementation timeline. That's, that's the only recommendation I was making is have that conversation, but unless the board feels very, you know, if the seven of you are confident right now, then so be it, then, uh, Cindy and I can go to work calendarizing that. Um, but if folks, you know, think that that wants some deliberation on exact timeline around that, then I'd say let's halt, uh, let's parking lot that conversation for now, come back to it later. What I would want you to finish up now is any deliberation around the remainder of your goals. And so there are two things that have been highlighted. One, there are a bunch of changes that basically mirror the changes in goal one. And so I just want to ask right quick, does anybody have questions about those? The other ones that mirror the changes in goal one? And if the answer to that is no, then I'd ask the superintendent to just focus on what are things that are in the remaining goals and interim goals that are dissimilar, uh, from the changes in goal one? Uh, but are the other, other concerns or questions about the other aspects of the goals that, that are essentially the same as the changes that are recommended for goal one? Any specific questions or comments around those?
So the interim measures for our black male fourth grade students are much different than what we've utilized in the past. It's also a very aggressive goal. Can you, can you just speak to some of the, the, the why behind the changes beyond what the rationale that you've given here?
Yeah, so our, our data around blackmail literacy indicates that our systems of support for students, uh, blackmail students with an IEP and blackmail students that are multi-language learners or in our ELL program, um, are not serving those students well. And so the interim, the interim goals are intentionally and deliberately focused on, allocating resources and moving our efforts and our energy into those specific targeted, um, supports for students in, um, in A L L and students with I E Ps. Additionally, what we added as an interim goal is a metric and a measure around self-efficacy. Uh, and that speaks specifically to John Hattie's work and the impact of student self-efficacy to have a 0.92 effect size on student achievement. What that also speaks to is our need to monitor self-efficacy, um, for the conditions of high expectations engaging and affirming classroom supports.
We've spoken a lot about our E L curriculum and why it's so impactful for our black males, specifically because of the, the way in which students can see themselves in the work and the cultural proficiency of, of the curriculum itself. Did we discuss, and I know that there's no, we can go down a really big rabbit hole here, there's no perfect assessment when it comes to, uh, one that lacks bias, but the I S A S in comparison to the curriculum that they're currently utilizing, do we believe that?
Yeah, I think I know where your question is going.
Thank you.
And so, um, yes, uh, we did speak about that and we actually spoke to, um, Taylor, I, the name escapes me of, um, the individual at the Department of Ed. April For, Force, Bortz. So April is the state supervisor for math. And we spoke about our implementation of E L curriculum and, um, I'm going to paraphrase that her comments were, if you implement with fidelity, the E L curriculum, your students will score extremely high in, um, the Iowa assessments. And so, um, recognizing the, um, again, to your point, that there's no perfect curriculum, there's no perfect assessment, but recognizing the E L curriculum as, um, one of the foremost culturally responsive curriculums out there, um, we opted to continue with these interim goals as they're stated.
Matt, a question maybe regarding the assessments with the, with the move to the, the Iowa assessment with, to that test, would that mean less testing in the classroom? Is there an elimination of a test?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And yes and no. I hate to give you that answer. Um, so it's not less testing as it currently is structured. However, if our goal metric were to utilize another external assessment, something different than the Iowa assessments, which we are required to provide, and, and then yes, that would be additional and another assessment that our students will be engaged in at the end of the school year. And going back to our conversation previously, um, we were moving towards developing interim goal metrics that would give predictive value towards an external assessment based on the quality measure of the external assessment. I don't know if I'm keeping that button right, but, um, the, I guess the other added, um, point that I would lift again, and I, I think I may have mentioned it earlier, but maybe not, not really, really clearly is there, there is a dynamic of, um, testing fatigue to, to your point, Jackie, um, and recognizing that we build up the, the opportunity for students to demonstrate proficiency and mastery of skills, um, currently and fast, and then turn around and say, and oh yeah, by the way, we also need to take the Iowa assessments. There's kind of a, a dip, if you will, in terms of, um, our organizational focus on the Iowa assessments as being the metric by which our students are demonstrating their brilliance. And so this would, um, there is a, there's a paradigm shift that we would be able to make, um, by utilizing this goal metric and then using our interim goals as a means to measure that predictive value.
Thank you.
Keep.
Keep.
Keep. Keep. Jackie? I think, and Maria's not in the room right now.
Yeah, I just, I think keep in the initial date. So again, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to comment on that, but whether it was 23 or 24.
Jackie, are you requesting a modification of the end date to be 23 or 24?
Correct. I'm, for all of them, my request is modification of end date.
So modify with the end date, okay. Thank you. We want to move on to goal three or wait for Maria to return? Anything to lift up or questions about goal three?
So I can, I'll speak through it just a little bit. And, um, so the goal three is reflective of the, um, the community value of, um, math and algebra, um, in the sense that, um, we're continuing to monitor our students' scoring, blackmail students' scoring and a B or higher in algebra in one of our, um, our interim goals. Um, the, the goal measure that we're recommending is that, um, we move this to an 11th grade assessment of I S A S, um, Iowa assessments, um, for the same reasons that we discussed earlier. The interim goal, the first interim goal that we have articulated for you is that the percent of students, a percent of grade six, 10, black male students responding favorably to teacher, teacher, student relationships, excuse me, on Panorama, um, would increase by 51% in the spring of 2022, um, to, where did it go? I missed it. To 45% in the spring of, uh, 2026. Um, the reason why we chose, um, teacher, student, uh, relationships is because, uh, it has a 0.52 effect size, um, on Hattie's meta-analysis. And the student, teacher relationships was chosen because, um, our blackmail students have the lowest percent responding favorably in that group. So that was the reason why we, um, we selected that interim goal. The second interim goal, um, is specific to six, eight, um, blackmail students meeting benchmark on FastBridge Math Screener. This, was it this school year? Was our first year providing that data set? Thank you for that, Mary. And so, um, again, utilizing our, um, our six, eight, uh, level of mathematics as a predictive value towards students being able to, um, demonstrate proficiency and fluency and comprehension in mathematics at the 11th grade level. We feel like that's a highly correlated indicator, um, towards meeting that overall goal metric. And then the third interim goal is, um, again, as maintaining that algebra focus and utilizing of blackmails earning a B or higher in algebra as an interim goal. I want to make sure that I don't miss any detail in the, oh, so there was a conversation earlier tonight around college and career readiness. So according to the, um, Iowa Department of Education, the 11th grade Iowa assessment is the measure for college and career readiness. And so that was one of the reasons why we chose to go towards the 11th grade measure of Iowa assessment so that we can capture that college and career readiness aspect. There's also, um, a strong correlation in our own internal analysis of maintaining that B or higher, um, interim goal, because it does have a correlation to students, um, scoring proficient on the Iowa assessments in their 11th grade year. So our internal analysis around students in their ninth grade year scoring a B or higher does have a strong correlation to students, um, demonstrating proficiency levels in their 11th grade year in mathematics on the Iowa assessment.
I had a comment, um, about this particular goal. After our last monitoring report and after we saw the really small universe of African-American males that were captured in the data, it just made me question whether or not that continued to be the right measure, given the small numbers that were reflected in the data. So I could be convinced that it is the right measure, but someone has to do that for me because based on where we were with our last discussion, and I think I raised it in the meeting, I just wonder if that continues to be the right measure, given the really small universe of students that are reflected in the overall numbers.
Yeah, and, and in the overall numbers, those were specific to, um, as the goal is currently written, um, to ninth grade black males and includes also eighth grade black males who, um, uh, passed algebra with a B or higher. The interim goal is reflected in this recommendation does begin to, um, include blackmail students from sixth grade through the 11th grade year. So we would increase the number of students impacted.
So I just want to follow. The percent of black male 11th grade students proficient is our goal. So how do we then account for lower grades if our goal is 11th grade?
So our, our, our thinking behind that, my thinking behind that is that we would capture the lower grades in our interim goals.
As a building block.
As a building block to get to 11th grade proficiency in math, utilizing Iowa assessment.
So I think where I have a disconnect is that if our goal is 11th grade students, all of the building that we're doing out here will eventually reflect the number of 11th grade students that are proficient, but it's going to take a while for that to happen, given the fact that math is definitely a building block subject. You got to learn this in order to be able to do that. So how do we, how do we articulate not meeting the goal? How do, how do we, how do we share that not meeting the goal doesn't mean that we're not eventually going to meet the goal if we're starting further down?
Would you ask that one more time?
So if our goal is 11th graders and we're not showing progress, at some point it is going to catch up and we are going to be able to reflect progress, but for the first few years, our numbers are not going to be where they need to be because we haven't done the preparation down here in order for students by the time they get to 11th grade to be proficient, um, in math.
Yes, I'm wondering, do the annual targets allow us to continue to show progress in 11th grade towards proficiency on the 11th grade, um, mathematics assessment?
Well, it's probably a predictor, right?
Right, so yeah, so those annual targets, um, in 11th grade, um, what, every year, every year in the 11th grade, those are the targets that we're going to hit. And in doing so, what helps us to get to those targets is the building block foundation that we're going to engage in, the specific focus and energy, um, in sixth grade mathematics. I'm not saying that we're not teaching mathematics pre-K through five, we are. This particular interim goal though was about in sixth grade students, beginning with sixth grade. I'm, I'm, I'm going to look at the team. What am I missing? Um, am I, what? I feel like I'm not articulating that very well.
Trying to say like, if you look at the spring to 2026, what grade are those students in right now? So we're building, you know, for us to meet that 45% in 2026, those are seventh graders right now, right, coming into seventh grade. So we're going to be working with our seventh graders, then when they go to eighth grade year, the ninth grade year, those are the building blocks I think you're talking about, Teri, so that we can make that goal in 2026. But it's going, it, and when we paste it out too, we, we.
Yeah, that's why we didn't.
Talk a little bit about.
We have a lot of catch up to do. And so what you're suggesting is that all of the work that we're doing sort of upstream with our fifth, sixth graders and beyond is going to create the opportunity for us then to meet the 2026 goal. But until then, we have to be cognizant that we may be behind because there's so much additional work that needs to happen in order for us. I think it's important to recognize that because we could have a whole different group of people sitting up here in two years, three years. And let's remind ourselves what we said tonight about this being a building block because someone could come up here and look at this data and say, you're behind, out of here. Um, if we don't recall what we said about how we're creating the framework for us to achieve the goal, really? Framework to achieve the goal in 2026.
This continues. This continues.
So mark this point in time.
Yes.
Write, write it down. Do whatever you need to. I won't be here in 2026 to recall. What we said tonight.
But Terry, yeah, I think, I was just going to say, I think it is, I just asked AJ about this, too, because if the goals and the measures are in evaluation of the superintendent under Student Outcomes Focused Governance, if you know that you're going to potentially fail for a couple of years, is that a fair? Is that a fair, is that fair?
So if you look at the annual targets and you look at from spring 2023 to spring 2024, the, the growth that we're expecting to occur with only one year's worth of resources and budget adjustments and allocations feeding into that goal, it's a much smaller increase than future years. So we're accounting for it based on what we've predicted in our annual targets. So we're not expecting, you know, we're only going to have one year's worth of resources allocated to the current 11th graders. So I think that the annual targets that are being suggested here account for what you are speaking to, Terry.
I totally agree, and I think it's really important that as we move through our monitoring work, that we constantly refer back to how the work that's happening sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade is informing what's happening with the target. And if there is something that is going exceedingly well or not so much, we need to be reminded about what the implications of that will be for the target. And not be shy about it. Just put it out there and name it.
Any other questions? Okay, Terry has already said keep. Maria?
See.
Keep. See. Juana?
Keep.
Jenna?
Keep.
Kim? Keep. Jackie?
Modify the date.
And Maria, to circle back to you on goal two, you were out of the room when we did the keep, delete, modify. Okay, thank you. So AJ, all of, all three goals have been discussed. All three goals have had five of the six board members say keep and one board member say modify to the date. So I will turn the, turn it back over to you.
Madam Chair, you obviously have a consensus of your board to proceed. Are you prepared to proceed with this action or is there something else you wanted to consider as it relates to your goals?
I'm prepared to move forward, but I do just have one question because I, I think I just want to know this for myself because I know we have one that is set with the date being something different. And I just want to know, what are the implications for staff when that date is changed? Let's just say we kept the date as is, 2023. What is the implications for staff, looking at the fact that we, the date would be changed, but you're still using these interims? What's the implication? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Statistically speaking, I'm going to ask Mary if that makes, if there would be an adjustment. Conceptually, there would not be. You know, we would, to Kim's point, we would invest the time, energy, and resources into this, this goal and these interim goals as they're written and have a year's worth of investment to show progress towards that. So what I would offer up, though, to be maybe clearer, is that we would keep, for example, in the spring of 2023, that 21%. We would keep the 27% in 2024. I would not move 2024 into a 45%. I would not expect that if that was the question. I would not do that.
No, that was, and I'm, and I'm okay moving with the consensus of the board, but I just wanted to raise that.
I think it's a great question.
I just wanted, I just wanted to know the implications of that when we're thinking about moving dates, what that means for staff. Because at the end of the day, it is you all who are doing that heavy lifting and the work and our, and everyone, all of our staff within DNPS. So I just wanted to ask that question. I am okay moving forward with the consensus of the board of keeping the goals as is.
All right. So with that, I'll consider that there is a consensus of the board to proceed. What that informs for us is that there is an intention in the board to try to maintain the timeline that's been created, which means we've got a lot of work to do and not a lot of time. And so Cindy and I will get moving on proceeding with that, not the least of which is the board taking the action of being communicative with its community around, around its intention regarding the goals.
AJ?
Yes.
Am I okay to just uplift this right now since we're all, we're all here talking? If I'm out of order, just let me know. But just wanted to know, I know we, we, you have mentioned some things about superintendent search and then maybe having a community conversation. Some of the things that have been thrown out there as options. Does this board feel that we need to have a separate conversation on this? Or are we okay with making the superintendent search our priority and having the community conversation in 2023? If that's okay to lift right now, if it's going to, if we're going to dive into a further, longer conversation and it needs to be separate, I'm all for that. But I think I want to make sure I have that clarification, too, as well, AJ.
Yeah, I think, I don't think that's out of order. It's directly related to the issue at hand of what to do with your goals. And so right now, the way you all have your calendar considered is that we are, you know, on task. Is that, you know, the board is discussing its goals along with updated dates and targets and any particular revisions. That is slated for August 2nd, and conveniently, it is currently August 2nd. So right now, you are right on track with your timeline. And these are supposed to be used for that. What it also contemplates is that, you know, as a board, that you'll do some work to communicate around these as part of your larger governance practice updates to the community. And that's work that we have to start planning for to make sure that we have that calendarized as well. But the intention is that you all get moving on that this month. We also then need to schedule a governing team retreat. We had some dates for that, but those dates didn't work for everyone. So we need to get that back on track. That's particularly important because I suspect a significant amount of the board's discernment around superintendent search process will take place during that retreat. And so until that gets calendarized again, there's probably not going to be nearly as much progress made on that. So the sooner that we can get it back on the calendar, the greater the likelihood that we can stay on track. But as long as that happens, you all, I think, are reasonably on schedule to honor the things that you said that you want to do in your timeline.
I believe I did put a date out to the board for looking at the board retreat. I'll go back and look at that email, but I thought I put a date out there. AJ and Cindy, when we talk tomorrow during agenda planning, maybe we can look at the calendars again to make sure that date is still open as well.
Yeah, and we're going to have to move with some haste because there's a lot of actions that you have scheduled for August, but that you don't have meetings scheduled for yet. And so I just encourage you all to go ahead and get that done. ASAP, board members, you know, the more quickly you can be responsive to a communication that comes out from Rosa about this, the better, because then we can get all that.
What is the date, what is the date being considered?
I thought the date that I sent out to y'all was September 13th. I'll have to go back in my email and check that out, but I believe I did.
For some reason, I thought that somebody said that that did not work for their schedule. But either way, that's, that can be an email. That doesn't have to be handled right now. But just, just know that there are dates coming up in August and September that the board has intended to get things done that will have an impact on this. And the sooner we can get that calendarized, then it'll be fairly easy to stay on track with the board's current intentions. So that being said, that concludes the tasks that we were given specifically for accomplishing this evening, which is going through the goals. Cindy, is there anything else I'm missing or are we good here?
I don't think there's anything missing on the goals section. I think just to understand also that the board, which this will also need to be added to the calendar, Matt is working on interim goals for a fifth guard rail. And so timing for that discussion on that and adoption of that will need to be added. And then the monitoring calendar drafted through 2026.
Doing a self-evaluation.
Yeah, that's all that there is for the goals section. So then there's a board self-evaluation on the, on the schedule next for this work session.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
AJ, as staff is transitioning, can you just clarify, whose responsibility is it to keep the timeline on track?
Yeah, so this is 100% board responsibility, generally speaking. In the way your policies are structured, the board delegates to the board chair the role of chief governance officer with responsibility for helping maintain the integrity of the board's work. But one thing that is super clear, this is board work. This is not staff work. And so the board needs to attend to it. You need to carve out time for it. But it's generally shepherded by your board chair, who you all have designated as your chief governance officer.
Thank you.
Like I said, I really like a timeline, so if I can assist at all with board leadership, I know there's a lot going on right now. So I'm just offering, doing that role if I can help.
All right, Madam Chair, back to you.
Yeah, we can do the board. Yeah, I, I can handle the board self-evaluation unless you want to hang around, AJ, and have fun, too.
Oh, I completely forgot that we're also doing the self-evaluation this evening. I knew there was something I was forgetting, but I had no mindfulness of what it was. But yes, if you want to guide the conversation, and then I can just jump in as needed.
Sounds good. I think, I think the conversation actually was, Juana, correct me if I'm wrong. The question that you asked to board members was to determine whether or not anything has changed since your last self-evaluation. And, and have there been responses to that question? Is that, or?
Yeah, those are the two to discuss tonight. Those were just the two questions that I put for board members to be ready to discuss was, is there any, anything that has changed from our baseline scoring from our last board evaluation conversation? Is there anything else you see the board doing in the next three months that isn't happening?
Yeah, that is an already timeline.
Yes.
Okay. So that is the conversation. I guess we can just, does anybody, first of all, how about we just open it up like this? Does anybody see any changes in the scores, in the score on vision and goals from the baseline, which was zero?
If we get our community listening session done?
So has anything changed? Right now, what we're doing is scoring yourselves currently, what, your baseline, so from the end of June.
Okay, so when you said, does anyone see anything changing? We're not future focused. No, still zero. Okay.
I agree.
Values and guardrails, has anything changed? No. Monitoring and accountability?
No.
Nope. Communication and collaboration?
No.
Unity and trust, you were at one. Anything change?
I don't think so.
I think there was just a question, so the reason why we didn't get a one on this one. Was the, any board member voting on an item in which there was a conflict of interest? Was that the, the case? Is that a, that's a three-month period, so I think that that is now past. So I did see the potential of us being at a one for this one.
You were at one last time.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sorry.
I thought we were at zero. Anybody disagree with one? You're at a one. And then finally, continuous improvement? Any change from zero?
No.
Okay. Anybody in this? Okay. For the next quarter, do you see anything that could be accomplished that would change what your score would be? In any of the categories? We can go vision and.
So currently at a zero, the next column on vision and goals include, which is approaching student outcomes. The board has adopted in collaboration with the super, whoops, I'm on the wrong line.
Yeah, I think that we could be at a 10 for vision and goals.
Yeah, so, so what that means is that you will have, you will have adopted the goals. They're smart. No, no fewer than one, no more than five. The superintendent has adopted one to three interim goals. They're smart. The status is able to be updated multiple times during the school year. And then the board publicly posts them for public comment prior to adoption. So that would be what would get you to 10. Sound reasonable? Guardrails?
I believe that we can be at a five for this one.
Yep, which would involve basically the same thing, except for the guardrail side of it. Guardrails, adopted interim. Superintendent's adopted interim. They're able to be updated multiple times and they. One. Five? No, I just thought I heard somebody saying something that I missed.
I just asked about the fifth guardrail.
Fifth guardrail, yeah. And I bet you'll have that. Yeah, and I bet you'll have that done by then. Monitoring and accountability?
I think that we could be at a 10 here if the existing or the proposed monitoring calendar currently is just an annual schedule. If we were to, once those goals are approved, take it out the entire life of the goal, I think that we could easily be at a 10.
So through 2026?
Yeah, so our calendar should span the entire life. Yeah.
Okay. The one thing in student outcomes focus is that the last, or I'm monitoring accountability under approaching, is that the superintendent is evaluated only on performance regarding the board's goals, guardrails, and interim goals and guardrails. And the board considers superintendent performance to be indistinguishable from school system performance. So that would also then, I believe, then require adopting your superintendent evaluation instrument by then as well, which should. Yep, should be done by them. All right, so 10 is what we're going to shoot for, for monitoring and accountability? All right. All right. Unity and trust, you are, that's where you're at a one. Oh, yeah, we did skip communication and collaboration, sorry.
Yeah, I think that just depends on if Rosa's, I think she was going to start doing that. I don't know that we can speak to that without her here.
Yeah, and I think you've got the last one in not approaching. Is that one?
That's got to happen for goals and guardrails, or vision and goals, as well as values and guardrails as well. So in order to get us to the 10 and five on those categories.
Okay. Are we saying communication and collaboration is one? That's what we're shooting for? Right? Continuous improvement? Oh, no, I think unity and trust, which was at a one. Do you have, in the updated, in the board manual that you are going to be going over, there's the language around conflict, ethics and conflicts of interest. All of those items in that green column, meeting student outcomes focus?
So we approve the new manual, we'll be at a three? As of current?
Yes, and agree, if you agree that you have honored those things thus far. Which I think we can wiggle that in. So three, okay. Continuous improvement? And is anybody disagreeing? I keep, I'm not looking around, I'm looking at my screen, I'm sorry. Speak, yell at me if you.
So unity and trust is what we just changed? Or was that continuous? Moving into continuous improvement?
We're moving to continuous improvement right now. So unity and trust, you're shooting for three? It was a one, you're shooting for a three?
He said if we adopt the new manual.
Yes, which I think is on the timeline as well. And continuous improvement currently at a zero. Again, it's the tracking annual cost of staff time and.
I think this one's going to remain at a zero in the next quarter.
Yeah, annual cost of staff time will take some time to. Two? Is anybody in disagreement around zero for continuous improvement as the next? All right, so then. Looking to jump from one to 29 in the next quarter.
One to 29?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
Progress. And it's all going to take those community listening sessions to get us there.
Cindy, can you go down and tell me again the scoring that we?
Decided you could go get to? So 10, five, five, 10, one, three, and zero. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will type this up and send it to Juana and Teri to include an upcoming agenda for adoption of your evaluation results. You're welcome. Any questions about that or anything else at the moment? Okay, and I think we're.
Yay.
Good, I'll turn it back over to you, Juana.
Thanks. Cindy, I do have one question because I'm looking at all these various emails. Have we approved our implementation timeline? I know there was an email where I think we hadn't had the board, we hadn't approved our board evaluation yet. It got pushed back. And then I think there was a recommendation to hold off on the timeline till we got this board evaluation approved. But have we approved the implementation timeline? So I think it was set to be on July's, but it was not. And I don't know that we have. And I'm just asking that question because, and I know I've missed the meeting, so I didn't know if it got approved during that meeting, which I don't recall that it did.
What was that, the what timeline?
The implementation timeline, the one that we're looking at. I don't think we adopted because I think there was a question about it. I believe AJ suggested that we get through this board evaluation first to see if there were any adjustments that would be, need to be made and the conversation that we had tonight, and then we would need to approve that timeline. So if it hasn't, I'm just saying that any changes that are made to it, we'll have to get those changes made and then get that timeline approved. Would be our first meeting in September. Or next week?
AJ's.
Yeah, I just encourage this sooner the better. If that has not been done, then get it done. So far, what I've heard from this evening is affirmation of the timeline, but having it, if the board has not voted on this, then do so, and we will continue operating with it until you tell us otherwise.
So if there's any adjustments that need to be made to the timeline, we'll need to do that. And then we'll need to get the timeline approved. We are meeting next week to do the personnel recommendations. So if that timeline is ready to go by then, I think ideally, we could go ahead and approve it then and add it to the agenda. Otherwise, we would have to wait until the next meeting, which would be the first Tuesday in September. We do have slated next week after the short board meeting. I know there will be two board members that are missing, and hopefully, we're okay to continue to move forward. But it's to go through the board manual. And I'll be talking to Cindy more about that, too, but really making sure that we go through it for those items that I brought up for your consideration to provide input from me on. I haven't received any, so if you have any thoughts to those, please send that to me. I know also Jackie has put some other thoughts into a document that she has shared with the board, so review those if there's any language things on those suggestions you had. Jackie, bring those to the meeting next week. But the idea next week is to kind of bring all our ideas, the whole keep, delete, modify, go through certain sections. And then, once we get that done, I think we're going to need to also, as a whole board, go through the document line by line to make sure there's a very clear understanding of this manual and we know what it's saying. And so I think that something's going to happen, but that won't happen next week. That's something that I think needs to happen with the entire board. But I think with the board members we have, if everyone's okay moving forward, that we at least get those sections solidified so that I can create a final document to get out to the entire board. Okay, all right. Well, then we don't have anything else and we are done for this evening. Thank you all.